...bereavement for Troy's two good Samaritans who lost their lives this month in two separate attempts to help others who were involved in car accidents. We offer our deepest sympathies to the families of Susan Keinscher, who died on Sunday, October 14, and George Dennis, who died on Wednesday, October 17, both having stepped outside of their cars on local freeways to help their fellow citizens. And we are deeply sorrowful for their losses, and their greatness won't be forgotten in these two separate incidents to help their fellow citizens. So if you please, if you find yourself in a situation where you want to help another person, please be sure to keep yourself safe first. We'll now share an invocation with Pastor Stephen Husava. Pastor Husava? From the Northfield Hills Baptist Church, and then it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in standing. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads and our hearts. Our gracious Father in Heaven, the Creator of the universe and of all things, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given to us, a day to celebrate life and a day to be thankful for all your goodness and mercy. We do want to lift up the two families that endured a loss, Lord Father, that you give them comfort and the peace that passes on, understanding, Lord Father, that you minister to the families at their loss. We pray for our mayor, for your grace and mercy be multiplied to her, and your hands of protection upon her and upon the city council, Lord Father, as you guide and direct both the mayor and the city council in dealing with the business of the city. We pray for the people of Troy, Lord Father, that we will be faithful in all things, help us to be faithful as good citizens. We pray your blessings upon this meeting, Lord Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The October 22, 2012 Troy City Council is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Form present, could someone please read the resolution excusing Councilman Teetz?
It is odd that Troy City Council excuses the absence of Councilman Teetz at the regular council meeting about October 22, 2012, due to being out of the county.
Second? Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a number of items under certificates of recognition and special presentations. The first two are from the Oakland County Commissioners and the Road Commissioner. If the Commissioners would like to approach the podium, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's a joy for us to be here tonight as county commissioners to present to you a check. But first of all, let me introduce the county commissioners, because sometimes people lose track of that. We have David Potts. He is a commissioner representing the southwest portion of Troy and Birmingham and Bloomfield. And on my left over here, we have Gary McGilvery, who represents the south and the east portion of Troy and Madison Heights. We have Mike Bosnick, who represents the largest share right in the center of Troy, and also Clausen. And also, we have our Road Commissioner, Chairman of the Board, Eric Wilson, here, who's part of this presentation, too. As you know, there is two government entities. There's the County Commission, and there's the Road Commission. A lot of people do come to the County Commission, ask about the roads, and we just pass it off to Eric and two of his colleagues to solve the problem, and we're thankful for that. But what we have here tonight is a tri-party agreement fund that has been accumulating up to pretty close to $3 million over the last six years. That's when communities don't use the fund. And how that works, when you say tri-party agreement, you talk about the Oakland County Commission, the Road Commission, and the local municipality, in this case, it's Troy, that puts into a pot, and as long as the local municipal matches the funds, they get the other two entities from the county and the Road Commission. And for the last six years, we've had extra money put in there of communities that have not homed up to their responsibilities, so it's come back. And Eric came to us about two months ago, and we just passed Thursday, by the way, at our meeting, to disperse this extra money and not let it sit around. And so we came up with, 14 communities have jumped to the forefront and said, "We'd like to have that money for road improvements." And so Troy definitely could use some areas to repatch and repave and use the money, and that's what we have. If you can come down here, I'd appreciate it, Mayor. And we want to present to you a check for the sum of... Drum roll. $248,020 that would not have been used, but we're making it, we're putting it to good use.
We made sure the check wasn't signed.
Take it back to the bank.
Come on, guys, good picture. Want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Come on. Madam Mayor, the other person we need to thank is our chairperson, Michael Gingel, who was very instrumental in this project.
Good. Thank you.
I'm sure all the Commissioners are aware of this. This is a combination of the Road Commission, the Commissioners, both from the Republic and the Democratic Parties, working together to help and help the system and get this money out for roads.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
You stay here, Mayor. We, Mike Bosnick, Councilman.
Yeah, and also with the last full board meeting, I'd like to thank a number of the folks in City Council that came to our meeting in Ponac. We passed a proclamation honoring the city of Troy for the recent honor by Money Magazine being named the best place to live in the state of Michigan. So as we did at the full board meeting, Commissioner McGilvery and I are going to read the proclamation. I'll read the first half, and then Gary read the second half. Whereas the qualities of life upon which we pride ourselves in Oakland County are in part the result of the commitment and dedication of the leadership in the citizens in the city of Troy, who have made the city an exemplary community to live. And whereas Troy has been selected as one of the 100 best small cities for 2012 in the United States and ranked as the top city in Michigan, rated 26 nationally by Money Magazine, the city was recognized because of its exceptional employment, leisure, schools, safety, cost of living, and quality of life. And whereas the city of Troy is one of Oakland County's premier communities incorporated as a township on May 28, 1827, before becoming a city in 1955, its history and longstanding community ties have made it one of Oakland County's oldest communities and...
Whereas the city of Troy boasts a population of more than 81,000 people and is known as an outstanding business and technology center. Troy has managed to successfully create a family-friendly environment while attracting business and establish a vibrant community. And whereas, we proudly join with the city of Troy leaders and residents to recognize its national honor, ranking the city as the 26th best small city in the country for 2012 by Money Magazine. Now therefore be it resolved, Michael J. Gingel, Chairperson of the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, together with Commissioners Mike Bosnick, Robert Goslin, Gary McGilvery, and David W. Potts, do hereby proclaim commendation to the city of Troy on its national achievement.
So again, thank you to the council members for joining us in the presentation of that proclamation. And for those of you that weren't able to attend, you just got a dramatic reenactment.
Thank you.
I'll repeat what I said when I first accepted this award. On behalf of the residents, the businesses, the government, the council, and management, we are proud to accept this plaque from you. I appreciate this very, very much, and we're very honored to be designated as the best place to live in Michigan in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here.
Next on the agenda, we're going to be recognizing the Domestic Violence Awareness Month of October, and we have a presentation by a lady from Haven. I'm sorry, it is Nicole Johnson. I'm sorry, we hadn't met before. Nice to meet you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you so much. If you'd like to stand at the other side, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. On behalf of Beth Morrison and the board members of Haven, I would like to observe Domestic Violence Awareness Month by letting you know that at Haven, we're able to serve... Well, first, our mission is to eliminate domestic violence and sexual assault through our nine treatment programs. And that includes emergency shelter, but it also includes counseling. It also includes our start house, and it also includes our prevention programs. During Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we'd like everyone to know that domestic violence can happen to anyone. Most of us in this room have probably know someone who has experienced some sort of sexual violence or domestic violence, and because of that, we honor survivors this month. Some things that we feel that the average person can do to help during this month is to hold people accountable when derogatory comments are made towards women and girls, when people make jokes about violence against women, when people have a tendency to blame victims and make the violence their fault. If we all watch our language and our thinking, and we begin to support victims in that manner, in a small way, in our everyday lives, we can make a really big difference. So I thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you today. If you'd like more information about Haven at any time, please feel free to contact us on our 24-hour crisis and support line, and that is for crisis and support and for information at 248-334-1274, and that's 24 hours a day. Are there any questions about Domestic Violence Awareness Month or Haven? Okay, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation for Mary Kerwin. Has Mary joined us this evening?
She's right there.
Oh, Mary, if you'd like to join me at the podium? Club Troy Citizen for 2012, distinguished citizen for 2012. Whereas Mary Kerwin...
No, it's not the Democrat Club. It's distinguished citizen of the year for Troy.
Yes, this was given to you by the Democrat Club, my understanding is. But let me read it, please. Whereas Mary Kerwin... Whereas Mary Kerwin has built a solid...
That's true, Janice. Janice, read what it says at the top.
Proclamation in recognition of Mary Kerwin, Troy's distinguished citizen for 2012. As I saw in the paper, was given to you at the Democrat Club. That's all I was mentioning. Whereas... Excuse me, excuse me, let me read it, please.
It was at Leadership Troy's Community Awards Banquet, which has been held since 1969.
Okay, let me read it to you, please, Mrs. Kerwin. May I read it to you, Mrs. Kerwin?
If you read it correctly.
Whereas Mary Kerwin has built a solid reputation as being a committed volunteer, serving many organizations with enthusiasm and dedication that is respected by all who know her. And whereas Mary has been a Troy resident for 24 years, she and Stormy Byer, her husband of 32 years, have raised two wonderful children, Rory and Katie, who learned from their parents the true meaning of volunteering and giving back to one's community. And whereas Mary's volunteer efforts through St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Church include lector, eucharistic minister, women's fellowship, funeral luncheons, and she has worked in RC1A. And whereas Mary's dedicated efforts on behalf of the Troy School District include working on many Troy Board Committees, volunteering as host mentor, cheering and serving on many committees at local schools, serving as PTA President at Hamilton, and PTO President at Smith, and parliamentarian for the PTA/PTO Presidents' Council. Whereas Mary organized the first Family Fun Night at Smith Middle School, she served on the Troy High School Booster Board, and the District School Improvement Team. Mary also served eight years on the Troy Board of Education, holding all offices, and she was recognized for outstanding leadership by county, state, and national organizations. And whereas Mary has been very committed to her community as well, she serves as President for the Women's Official Network, MSU Extension Leadership Council Chair, and on the State Council. She is a longtime member of Leadership Troy, League of Women's Voters, Troy Community Coalition, Friends of the Troy Public Library, and Troy Historical Society, donating her time and making monetary donations to the organizations. And whereas Mary's dedicated commitment to the city includes being an alumna of the Troy Citizens Academy, serving on Troy Futures Task Force, Image and Field, and Lifestyle Committees, serving two years on Troy Planning Commission, one year as Vice Chair, serving four... Excuse me, serving four years on Troy City Council, one year as Mayor Protem. Mary was also President of the MML Elected Officials Academy, and now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to Mary Kerwin for her selfless and tireless service and dedication to this community. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council and all of Troy's residents congratulate Mary Kerwin for being named Troy's Distinguished Citizen for 2012, and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. Presented this... It's dated the 17th, but I'm presenting it this 22nd day of October 2012. Thank you very much. That's very kind. Just to clarify, since 1969, every year, there has been distinguished citizen chosen, and I'm really humbled to be listed among those many who have been chosen. For a complete list, you could visit leadershiptroy.org. Leadership Troy puts on an annual banquet for the newer council members and for you, Madam Mayor. That's always held the third Wednesday of the month in October. And not only is a distinguished citizen honored, but many of the wonderful volunteers who helped to make this the most livable city. So I invite and remind everyone that this Saturday, October 27, is a day of giving back, and you can visit leadershiptroy.org to see all of the people who have given back. And then I offer you the opportunity to join any of those organizations and give back on that single day if you choose, or join and become an active volunteer. It really is the fabric which knits this community together, and it's something that we are so very, very proud. So thank you so much for taking the time from your meeting to hand me this proclamation. Certainly do appreciate that, and thank you all for coming and for all that you do to make this a very special community. Thank you. We're now being joined by the Troy Police Pistol Team. The Troy Police Department Pistol Team wins Governor's Cup. On September 12, the Troy Police Department Pistol Team won the Class A competition at the Annual Michigan Police Shoot in Jackson, Michigan. The team was awarded the Governor's Cup for Class A, which includes police departments with 100 to 499 employees. The annual event is sponsored by the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. The tradition dates back to its inception in 1928, which began at the Michigan State Police Headquarters in East Lansing. The purpose of this event is to encourage marksmanship by Michigan Peace Officers. The Governor's trophies have been awarded in each of four classes since 1949. The 2012 Troy Pistol Team, consisting of Sergeant Robert Wolf, Sergeant Joseph Haddad, and Officers Craig Fitzpatrick, Milt Stansbury, and Patrick McWilliams, won the match with a score of 1,251 out of 1,500, with 15 shots placed at the center X of the bullseye. Congratulations, gentlemen. Chief?
I just want to introduce the members of the Pistol Team. There was five members in the winning team this year. The top shot was Sergeant Robert Wolf. He couldn't be with us this evening. He's involved in a criminal investigation right now. I wanted to take the opportunity to show the target that they shoot at. Yeah, this one obviously doesn't have the holes in it, but I think everyone else has seen these. Sergeant Wolf scored a possible 300 points. He scored 284 points with seven shots in this X. So he did very well. The rest of the team, they did an excellent job also. Along with Sergeant Wolf, Sergeant Haddad was on the winning team this year, Officer Stansbury, Officer Fitzpatrick, and Police Officer McWilliams. The other officers up here, Officer Bragg, Officer Cosholy, and Officer Mitten are members of the team also. They just weren't on the winning team this year, so they have to put up with the abuse from the winning team members. But they've been on the winning team in the past. We have two teams that shoot this. I'm very proud of them. I know the council members are very proud of them. It's an excellent job. And Russ is going to put the trophy up here so we can see how big the trophy is. This is the 10th year in a row that the Troy Police Department has run this, won this award. Very proud of these guys. Thank you.
There are no carryover items. We do have a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant for 2013. Is anyone here to make a presentation, Manager Goldpepper?
Cindy Stewart, who just walked out the door. Okay.
Every year, we come before you because Oakland County gives us our money, and we have to hold a public hearing for what we're going to use. This year, we have $145,204 for our estimate for 2013, and we are recommending for the Home Tour Program, $43,561. We can only use 30% of our total. And Street Improvements, $101,643. We only have certain areas within Troy, if you saw my backup, that we can use these monies, except for the Home Tour Program. Those can be used for any senior citizen, low-income, or person with disability. And we mow their lawn in the summer, do a spring and fall cleanup, and then we shovel their snow. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? The public hearing is now open. No one has signed up to speak on the issue. Public hearing is closed. Could someone bring the resolution to the table? Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Whereas Oakland County is preparing an annual action plan to meet application requirements for the Community Development Block Grant Program and other community planning and development programs, and whereas Oakland County has requested CDBG eligible projects from participating communities for inclusion in the action plan. And whereas the city of Troy has duly advertised and conducted a public hearing on October 22, 2012, for the purpose of receiving public comments regarding the proposed use of PY2013 Community Development Block Grant Funds in the approximate amount of $145,204. And whereas the city of Troy found that the following projects meet the federal objectives of the CDBG program and are prioritized by the community as high priority need. Account number 172160-732170, public services, yard services, in the amount of $43,561. Account number 172170-731864, street improvements, in the amount of $101,643. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Troy CDBG application is hereby authorized to be submitted to Oakland County for inclusion in Oakland County's annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents, agreements, or contracts which result from this application to Oakland County.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll now proceed to public comments for agenda items only. As a reminder, I'd like to restate that the audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed at the council rather than to city administration or back at the audience. Also, there's a timer on the city council table in front of the mayor's chair that turns yellow when there's one minute of speaker time remaining and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum of this great city. First on the list is Kathy Fucinari. She's a resident. She wants to speak on Item M1, which is... It's not listed.
Recall process.
Oh, the recall process.
Recall process, correct.
Yes. Good evening.
Hey, I'm Kathy Fucinari. I've lived in Troy for 36 years. Since 1976, my husband and I have happily paid our taxes through all sorts of economic situations, contributing our part for the community we moved here to build. We raised our family, working together with a diverse population, creating opportunities for all our children. The synergy at work in this community proved to have greater benefit than any of us could have generated alone. However, the atmosphere has changed. It has turned divisive, full of distrust, allowed bigotry to flourish, and encouraged fearing others of a different background or lifestyle. As we move forward from a successful... As we move forward from a successful recall effort, we need to be mindful of not continuing to generate a negative atmosphere. We may need one or more people appointed until the next regularly scheduled election a year from now. We must look for candidates who present more, who represent more than ideology, someone who is not deeply entrenched in ideology that they can't see the human beings standing directly in front of them. Whoever is appointed will need to be able to listen to other points of view and will be willing to represent all the people in this community, not just those who agree with their personal agendas. We need someone who will work with the staff the city has and not drive people out because they want to replace them with cronies. We need to look at character, integrity, and honesty. Too much misinformation has been spread. Remember the nonexistent slush funds. I am encouraged, due to the passage of a budget and the hiring of a new city manager, coalheads will prevail during this process. We are counting on the six of you to do the right thing. The community will be watching this process carefully. Let's return responsible government to Troy. I am Kathy Fucinari. I fully support the recall of Janice Daniels. Vote yes. I already did.
Thank you. Fred Eckout, he's a resident. He also wants to speak on the recall process.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. I don't think the city is fully prepared to handle a recall and its leadership implications. As I believe Councilman Campbell will later point out in Council Referrals Agenda Item Number M01, the memorandum from City Manager Culpepper and City Attorney Bloom indicates that there is, quote, "no process for appointment," quote, of a replacement mayor when the existing mayor is recalled. The memorandum goes on to say that there could be an application/interview process, but the only restrictions have to do with term limits and eligibility requirements. In short, after a recall, anyone could end up being mayor, depending on the process and selection procedures city council devises. This person would definitely not be an individual elected as their representative in the mayoral position. I'd be surprised if council has had the time to give this process much thought. So, since the new mayor's appointment is also required within 30 days, a recall sounds like a recipe for a 30-day shutdown of city council's agenda while I devise a process and try to pick a new mayor. I believe that the hard-working council members who oppose the recall and selflessly donate their time and energy to the running of this city deserve more than that. They have a difficult job already and don't need to be burdened with the selection of new mayor just because a few individuals don't like the mayor and have managed to convince others. The City of Troy also deserves more than to have to contend with this disruptive process. Qualified and willing mayoral candidates are difficult to find. They will be more difficult to find, knowing they can be recalled at any time, for any reason, proven or not. There's a process for expressing one's displeasure with the mayor. It's called an election. Exercise your right to vote. Don't support the flawed and unsubstantiated recall process. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Nardi, he's a resident. He would like to speak on the approval of guaranteed maximum pricing on the Transit Center. Mr. Nardi?
Hi.
Nice to see you.
I want to speak on the recall, too.
Okay.
I'm Lee Nardi, a 40-year resident of Troy, mayor and council. I came here to thank you and commend you for trying to keep your campaign promises, even though you can't always do it by yourself. Now, a lot of politicians say whatever the people want here just to get elected. You have not done that. You've kept your word. I'm a little confused, though. Since when is keeping your word and being honest the reason to recall someone? I don't understand this. Two issues come to mind: tax increases and the Transit Center. You said you would oppose any tax increases. So far, you have. You said you would vote not to accept the federal grant for the Transit Center. You did. For those who don't agree with you, the proper time to express their feelings was during the election by voting for your opponent, not waiting till now and trying to upset the apple cart.
Mr. Nardi, I think that you haven't been at the meeting for a couple of weeks.
Long time.
Yeah, and we've changed the public comments. This is specifically on the Transit Center. If that's the issue that you want to speak on, you speak specifically on the Transit Center, and then you could have spoken later during the regular public comments for items not on the agenda.
Well, that's what I thought I was doing, items not on the agenda.
Well, this is the items-on-the-agenda portion. The not-on-the-agenda portion is later in the meeting.
So, what I speak about...
Continue with your comments on the Transit Center, if you will, please.
You voted for it. What were you thinking? If this were a money-making proposition, don't you think Amtrak would have jumped all over it? Six or seven million is chump change to them. Didn't they have a small station there before and close it because of lack of riders? Somehow, some way, this property, this probably will cost us taxpayers in the end. All of this BS just so that Troy can become Birmingham's parking lot? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nardi.
Sorry, I got off track here. I didn't know any better.
We'll have to talk about the new rules of procedure.
Right.
Thank you. Next on the list is Linda Kaima. She's a resident. She'd like to speak on the recall petition and Mary Kirwin's proclamation.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Regarding the recall process, the No Troy Recall site states Troy recall efforts lack an authentic foundation for engaging the recall mechanism. While the Michigan State Constitution, Article 2, Section 8, extends Michigan voters the right to recall. Michigan's recall process is governed under Michigan Election Law, MCL 168.951-976. The sufficiency of any statement of reasons or grounds procedurally required shall be a political rather than a judicial question. Per the Citizens Research Council of Michigan regarding recalls, roughly 1/3 is for misconduct, which is ineffective leadership, incompetence, misrepresented, and false information given to the general public; roughly 1/3 for non-financial policy disagreements, and 1/3 for financial policy disagreements. Michigan recall law does not limit grounds for recall to malfeasance, failure to perform duties of office, et cetera. Roughly 2/3 of recall elections are related to policy disagreements. Restricting recalls to misconduct would require a constitutional amendment. Arguments for maintaining the recall: it helps promote democracy, makes government more responsive and responsible to citizens, encourages elected officials to maintain a minimum level of conduct, recalls employed as political power plays rarely work, voters predisposed against recalling officials, high standards employed in process keep recalls difficult to carry out. Also, per the No Troy Recall site, they say 53% of the recall petition signers didn't even vote in the last year's city election. There is nothing in the recall process that says you had to vote in the previous election to sign a petition. Maybe these individuals realized what a mistake they made by sitting home and will not make that mistake again. Also on that site, facts about the petition circulators. They mention that the top 25 circulators gathered 75% of the signatures. Good for them. They were really hard workers. The circulator of a recall petition must be 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen and a resident of Michigan. The circulator of a recall petition does not have to be a registered voter or resident of the district represented by the public official whose recall is sought. Also, it says, "Did you know if the recall passes in November, the city will be left for an entire year without a mayor elected by the popular vote, but instead appointed by big government advocates? Municipal elections are nonpartisan and, as such, deal with the pressures and the issues of the city rather than the grander scheme of things. I invite anyone who feels this council full of big government advocates to prove the same."
I'm sorry, the time is up. Thank you. Next is...
Do you want me to... I can do Mary's now?
Oh, no. You had three minutes to speak on the...
Each...
No, not on each item. It's three minutes.
I was told it was each item.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you. Edna Abraham, resident, wants to speak on the recall process?
Point of order.
Your point?
I think we need to verify that. I think that was one of the issues that when we changed the rules that we might have to deal with this type of incident, if we could get clarification from the city attorneys.
Mr. Mozy?
Will the rules say any member of the public not a petitioner of an item shall be allowed to speak for up to three minutes to address any topic... I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Any member of the public not a petitioner shall be allowed to speak for up to three minutes total to address postponed regular business consent agenda or study items or any other item on the agenda as permitted under the Open Meetings Act. It's, I mean, a fair representation of that, in my opinion, would be they get three minutes per item, because that's...
You said three minutes total. You read...
Three minutes total per item.
I do think that's something that we discussed when we did these rules, that we, this may come up. I think, I think I recall that discussion, unfortunately, but I do.
I thought I recalled it as well. Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, if I may, read that again. It does use plural here, because I'm really not sure. I just want to get this right, because this sets a precedent for what we're going to be doing throughout this, this meeting. Any member of the public not a petitioner of an item shall be allowed to speak for up to three minutes total to present postponed regular business consent agenda or study items, plural. Or any other item on the agenda is permitted by the Open Meetings Act during the public comment for items on the agenda portion of the agenda. That's open for interpretation, but I read that plural that, and I'm not a master of the language, but I want to make sure we get this right, because it sets a precedent and we need to get it right.
I would agree. It is open. It's not clear, but a fair interpretation would be, because it uses the plural items, three minutes total for each item. That would be a fair interpretation.
Madam Mayor. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Unfortunately, Councilman Teetz is not here, and he's the person that brought this forward to us, really, to kind of take a look at making this change. And I want to just kind of go back to the discussions I thought I remembered us having. His, I believe that his goal was to streamline this so that it made our meetings run more effectively. And originally, when we had the rules and procedure discussion last year, when we had new members of council, you had brought it up that you wanted it to potentially be changed where a person could speak at each item. And we did not vote to do that. We did not want to do that. And I believe that was the same in the conversation that we had recently when we changed it. We did not want to do that, because we didn't want to open it up to allowing an unlimited amount of time for people to speak on potentially every single item on the agenda, because that obviously would defeat the process of streamlining. So, I can't speak for Councilman Teetz, but I remember having a discussion where by splitting it up this way, it would allow three minutes and three minutes, so potentially someone could speak for six minutes, which would be an increase to the five-minute time limit that we had before.
It was Councilman...
That's my recollection of the conversation as well, understanding that somebody could potentially speak three minutes on every item on the agenda and occupy about 25 minutes of time on most evenings. And I don't think that was our intent whatsoever. I believe it was certainly three minutes on agenda items, three minutes on anything else, and that was the extent of it.
I agree.
I would be with that as well. So, unless we decide to have a resolution to change that again, I believe it is six minutes total, so it's three minutes on agenda items total, and then three minutes on non-agenda items. That was the agreement.
I'm sorry.
Trey?
As the, as the chair of this meeting, you could make the call. I would agree, there seems to be different interpretations. I was not involved in drafting these. Obviously, there are some interpretations that the intent of that provision was a three-minute total, meaning that if they have 10 items, they could speak three minutes. The way it's worded, it is open for interpretation, but as the chair of this meeting, you can make the call. I would also note that this council has the authority to waive the rules. If the council wanted to pass a resolution to allow three minutes per item, they could also make that a resolution unless... It's your call, Mayor, based on...
Well, I think that we were being, we felt confident that we were giving the public an extra minute, so another opportunity to speak, and so I would agree with the three other members on council that have said it's a six-minute total opportunity to speak, three minutes during the items on the agenda, and three for non-agenda items. And if we would choose to change that in the future, maybe we could bring a resolution forward again. Edna Abraham, resident, wants to speak on the recall process? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council, city staff. As you mentioned, Mayor, I have lived in Troy. I'm a resident. I've lived here all my life. I'm a product of the Troy School District, a reflection of the culture and the mores of the city. And as I understand it, you have not lived here quite as long, maybe a dozen or so years. And I wonder if that may be, maybe some of the reason for some of the missteps that have happened in the past year. Perhaps it's because you don't have a finger on the pulse of what the residents of Troy really want in their leaders. We want partnerships, not divisiveness. We want a leader who will partner with Troy's community, whether they're Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist, or atheist, straight, gay, or bisexual, anyone who will partner on projects that benefit the community as a whole, not just projects that the leader is drawn to. We want a leader who partners with the business community, especially with the Chamber of Commerce, and not one that alienates them with scorn and tries to plant seeds of doubts that the overall community will distrust them. We want pragmatic solutions, not ideology and hyperbolic claims. We want a leader who will work with all types of thought leaders to find the best possible feasible solutions to Troy's problems. We want these solutions to be specific to Troy's needs and not to be a notch on a political party's belt. After all, ideologies do not solve problems, but pragmatic, open-minded people do. We want accountability, not excuses. We want a leader who owns up to his words or her words and actions. And when I say own up, it means acknowledging those words and actions and the context in which they were given. It means apologizing for unintentionally hurting and marginalizing constituents.
Excuse me, Ms. Abraham, this isn't really talking about the recall process. This seems better suited for the non-agenda items. I asked Mr. Nardi to concentrate on an agenda item. What do you have to add to the recall process?
It's coming through in my conclusion. It's coming through in my conclusion. Thank you. It means admitting when mistakes or errors in judgment have been made. It means making amends. It means the buck stops with the leader. We need a leader who is focused on bettering Troy. We want a leader who recognizes that Troy didn't become one of Money Magazine's Best Places to Live, or one of the safest cities in the state, without exemplary city staff, police, and all-volunteer fire department. We want a leader who recognizes that it takes years to build a great city like Troy, and that the accolades received today are truly based on decisions made by previous leaders and executed by the exemplary city staff, police, and all-volunteer fire department. We want a leader who respects employees and treats them fairly. After all, this is the most effective way to get the best out of people. Plus, it's just the right thing to do. Above all, we want a return to dignity, professionalism, and decorum. We need to look no further than the previous decades of council members, city staff, and school board members, people like Richard Doyle, Gene Stein, Randy Husk, Dave Lambert.
Thank you.
I'm voting yes on the recall. Let's return to the...
That concludes the public comment section. It's now on the agenda, the City Council's City Administration response in reply to public comments. Is there anyone that has any comments? There are no postponed items. We now move to regular business. There are no mayoral appointments, no city council appointments. There are mayoral nominations to the Downtown Development Authority. I'm ready to make my nominations. First, I want to request the reappointments of all the members who wish to be reappointed, and that includes Mr. Gregory Carnego, Mr. Lawrence Kiesling, Mr. Alan Kerlich, and Mr. Daniel McLeish. I've reached out to Mr. Arkon Jonah, the developer of the Big Beaver Center, as an opportunity to welcome Mr. Jonah as a valued member to our opportunity to welcome Mr. Jonah as a valued member to our community. He accepted my offer for this board position and provided the Clerk's office with an application this past week. It's included in the agenda packet. And I would wonder if we could move the resolution forward on the named parties in a second, please?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McInnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Nominations approved. They'll be voted on in the next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on November 12th. There are no city council nominations, no requests for closed sessions. Item I-4 is approval of guaranteed maximum price and amendment to the Tools-Clark contract for the Troy multimodal transit facility. Could someone please move the resolution forward? Madam Mayor? Mayor Potem McInnes?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Potem McInnes, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? City Manager Pol Pepper?
Okay. In relation to this item tonight, we will have Mr. Steve Van Det speak to the contract itself. However, in relation to this, in relation to the request by council, I have Mr. Glenn Layton tonight, who will speak on some of the issues of concern the council has had. Their main concern was the longer-term revenues that may be derived from the center, which could in turn be used for any maintenance and upkeep of the property in the future. Mr. Layton is here to... or Layton is here tonight to speak to this, but he's also going to be speaking to you once a month until the project is built. His intention is to bring you up to date on the new thoughts and the reaching out to various partners and businesses and how they may play into this particular operation. Along with Mr. Layton, Michelle Hodges from the Chamber is here to also speak a few words upon his completion of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. As the Troy multimodal transit center proceeds towards the construction phase, city management thought it might be helpful to provide regular briefings on key topics related to the facility. In a few minutes, city engineer Steve Van Det will answer any questions you might have regarding the guaranteed maximum price contract that was before you today. And Steve will continue to provide regular construction updates to city council over the course of the next several months. It will be my role to discuss some of the other aspects related to the Troy multimodal transit facility, including items related to key milestones that might be coming up, economic development, community development issues, business opportunities that relate to the transit facility, and the transportation network in general, which this facility will be a part of. One key milestone that is coming up will be the groundbreaking. And to that end, in terms of announcing certain milestones, the groundbreaking ceremony is tentatively scheduled for the morning of Tuesday, November 27th. We think it'll be around 10:00 a.m., but we will certainly get a confirmation of that date out to you when it is solidified. The groundbreaking ceremony will be an opportunity for the various project partners to join together to launch this project. From the federal and state levels to Amtrak, to Smart Bus, to the Troy Chamber, to the business community, and our local and regional partners, this project has required the full cooperation and collaboration of many entities over the course of several years. As an example of one of those partnerships, city staff is currently working closely with the Troy Chamber on marketing business opportunities for the facility. Several businesses have expressed interest in support of the center, either through sponsorship or procurement opportunities. City staff is currently putting together a list of opportunities for the business community. For instance, items such as enhanced project landscaping, facility seating, TV monitors, Wi-Fi, naming rights, sponsorship opportunities, signage, advertising. These are all opportunities that the business community can be availed of, and they've expressed interest in supporting. The Chamber and city staff are planning an informational event for the business community to highlight these opportunities. We expect this event to occur later this year or in early 2013. As we move forward towards project implementation, I think it is very important to understand that, as its name implies, the $6.2 million Troy multimodal transit facility is not just a 2,000-square-foot building for Amtrak riders. The facility will replace an outmoded Amtrak stop with an ADA-compliant, safe, and secure transportation center here in Troy. The facility will strengthen mobility options through a centralized facility that will allow user access to inner-city passenger rail service, regional bus routes, and taxi services. The facility will provide linkages to ground-level intermodal facilities via ADA-compliant sidewalks and a pedestrian bridge over the tracks to a new Amtrak platform on the west side of the tracks. The new facility will also provide a bus-stop area sized to accommodate four full-time-sized buses. A passenger drop-off will also be included, a pickup area, and a taxi waiting area. Parking for all modes of travel will be provided in an improved parking area on the Troy side of the tracks. The Troy multimodal transit facility is one small part of a larger regional transportation network. For instance, another key part of the network is the new $28.2 million transit facility being built in Dearborn. The Dearborn facility is being built on Long Michigan Avenue with immediate access to the west Dearborn Commercial District and with direct pedestrian access into the Henry IV Greenfield Village. The Dearborn station is on the same Wolverine Amtrak route as the Troy station. It's just a few stops towards the rest of us. The additional track improvements also are contemplated in terms of the whole network as a whole. In the area in the western part of the state, around Kalamazoo and Albion, there are significant track improvements being worked on, and those improvements will help alleviate conflicts between freight and passenger trail traffic and also improve rail times in general. So as construction of the facility proceeds, city staff will continue to provide this council with information and regular updates as appropriate. Staff is always available to answer any questions that you may have and look forward to working with you going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Michelle, I think, has a few words.
Good evening, Mrs. Hodges.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you this evening, and thank you to my teammate. It is a pleasure to join Glenn Layton here at the podium, and I will be very brief because he did such a great job at apprising you of our status to date. My purpose for being here is just to remind you that we are fully engaged behind the solution and behind our pledge to identify a business model that will help support the operating expenses at the center. We are working diligently in that direction, and we continue to function as a facilitator, bringing those opportunities to the table and doing what we can to assist the city staff in bringing them home, so to speak, much as we hope our Tigers do shortly, right? So again, thank you for that opportunity, and it is a pleasure to be working with the city team, and we look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, will Mr. Van Det be presenting this?
He should be. One second, he should be coming out.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It was 10 months ago, back in January, that we were directed by this body to come back with a transit center fully designed and priced and ready for construction for the sum of $6.2 million. And at that time, we were at approximately 8.5. I'm happy to say that with the excellent team that we have working on this project, our architect-engineering team of Huberth and Clark, excuse me, and Newman Smith, and our construction manager, Tools and Clark Construction Company, we have put together a facility that meets all of the functional requirements that FRA laid down for us. And we have, with the work of the team, have come up with a project that is fully functional, and if I may say so myself, it's quite beautiful. And so I have these gentlemen here to thank for that, and I'm happy to be here and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McInnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
I have to remain true to my principled opposition to the project. I'm voting no.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. We move now to consent agenda items. Are there any items that need to be removed for discussion? Could someone please move the resolution forward on all the consent agenda items, please? Councilman Fleming?
Resolved. The Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Court.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Potem McInnes. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Potem McInnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no items under memorandums, and there's no submitted future council agenda items. So the next item on the agenda is public comments for items not on the agenda. I don't think I need to read the disclaimer again. The first person on the list is Toby Goslin. She's a resident of Troy. Toby?
Good evening. Good evening. How are you? Smile. I'm not going to hurt you. Promise. Yes, my name is Toby Goslin, and I'm a relatively new resident here, so I'm paying close attention. I have fresh eyes, no baggage, so you ought to talk to me one day. On November 6, 2012, I shall vote yes to demand for the recall of Mayor Daniels. Troy voters gave Ms. Daniels an opportunity to serve this great city. In the end, she created a public relation nightmare, causing many to question if she's fit to lead. Hate and bigotry are learned behaviors with serious consequences. Why any person or group would support an elected official that exhibits these characteristics is beyond my understanding. It's time to put closure to Mayor Daniels' agenda of hostility, mismanagement, and intimidation. The Yes to Recall Mayor Daniels organizers collected a massive 9,400 petition signatures. This achievement allows Troy voters to express their voice and fix the damage done to Troy's reputation this year. We have the responsibility to be part of the solution, or we are the problem. To those acting like defiant children, finding pleasure in being rude, harassing, and unprofessional, you are on notice. Your attempts to confuse and create apathy will not succeed. I wish to thank the Yes to Recall organizers and the many volunteers for doing the hard work. You are the unsung heroes repairing the damage done to Troy's image by a misguided mayor. In the best interest for the common good, join me in voting yes to recall Mayor Daniels on November 6, 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Puskas, he's a resident of Troy. Good evening.
Good evening. Today, I'm here to voice my support for the recall of the mayor. To me, it comes down to one issue: bigotry. Reasonable people can disagree on most of the issues that come before the city council, but bigotry is intolerable in an elected official. I knew the mayor was opposed to the transit center before her election, but I didn't know that she would think it's a good idea to bring a man with a history of crude racist, anti-Muslim, anti-Mormon remarks in front of the city council to make a presentation about the transit center, a man who doesn't live in Troy and whose only expertise on the subject is his ability to use Google and PowerPoint. And of course, his presentation was an absurd, embarrassing sideshow. I also didn't know about her homophobia. A lot of the mayor's supporters have said people are making a big deal over one word, but her gay slur was the tip of the iceberg that exposed homophobic views she has continued to express time and time again. In her role as mayor, she met with members of Troy High School's Gay Straight Alliance, who wanted her to participate in an anti-bullying and suicide prevention event. It's well-known that gay students are the most vulnerable to bullying, and we have a group of teenagers in our community who have the courage to stand together to support those who are most at risk. All they asked was for the mayor to stand with them, but instead of agreeing to this simple act of compassion, she suggested that she would bring in psychiatrists who would tell them that the homosexual lifestyle is dangerous. Can you imagine going to an anti-bullying event and lecturing the kids who are being bullied about living a dangerous lifestyle? If there's any danger in a homosexual lifestyle, it comes from people like you who would stigmatize and deny them the same rights you and I enjoy just because of who they are. And when you consider the man she brought in to talk about the transit center, you can just imagine the expertise of these so-called psychiatrists. In an interview not long ago, she compared being gay to smoking cigarettes, as if it's just a bad habit that can be broken with enough willpower. What kind of a distorted view of human behavior does it take to even think of such a comparison? So why does this matter in her role as part-time mayor of Troy? Just look at the world around us. Wherever bigotry is accepted, in the culture and the laws, there is no justice. This isn't about political correctness or some Pollyanna notion that we should all be friends and get along. Bigotry is a scourge that undermines a very foundation of justice in a free society, the principle of equal protection under the law for all citizens. The history of our own country is an ongoing struggle to live up to that ideal. I don't enjoy public speaking, but the most effective way to fight bigotry is to confront it and expose it for everyone to see. So here I am. Because if we don't speak up now, then when do we? How much bigotry are we willing to ignore? This is our chance to say that this is unacceptable in our city. I'd like to thank all the people who sacrificed their personal time to make this recall possible. They've given us the opportunity to correct a mistake we made a year ago, and I hope we take advantage of it.
Thank you. Greg Sherman, he's a resident of Troy. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll just start off by saying the main issues that most people had were with the transit center and the library. My paths crossed with Mayor Daniels actually about a year ago when we were at the voting precinct. My issues are dealing with the mistrust, the confusion, the distortion that seems to be displayed in all of the campaign literature that's displayed. It seems to be continuing today as a constant pattern. The views and ideology are just too rigid for me, and I think they're too rigid for Troy. Last night in 60 minutes, they were doing an interview with Steven Spielberg, and in that, he was talking about his new movie coming out about Lincoln. The two points that he stressed on that movie are leadership and truth. I think that is two qualities that are lacking in our mayor today. I'm voting yes to recall Janice Daniels.
Thank you. Dr. Michael Ross, he's a resident of Troy. Dr. Ross, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels, and members of the city council. I came as well to speak about the recall issue, and I had a few concerns. First of all, I want to say that a recall is a very vital part of our form of government. It gives the citizens an opportunity to correct something that's gone awry, whether it's malfeasance, it's corruption, or it's a failure to follow the promised agenda that someone was elected to follow, or whatever political reason it is. Our statute does have a lot of leverage for the voters to correct something that's went wrong. So a recall is a safety mechanism that really trusts the citizens to govern themselves. So it's rightful that we have that opportunity. It allows the community to restore integrity to government, and it's intended to strengthen the process, and it's intended to bring the community together. The purpose of a recall is not to divide the community. We see here that there's a lot of evidence that our city is one of the best cities in the United States, where people would love to come and be. So why would we want to engage such a divisive process as a recall unless we've got a very good reason? We've got someone who is really violating the community, and I don't know that we've seen that evidence. Removal of the mayor would overrule the decision of the voters who elected her. That is a very, very big decision to take, and we really got to stop and think... That is a very, very big decision to take, and we really got to stop and think, do we really want to pull that trigger and do that? It means that the mayor, okay, would be taken out of office, and the office would then be filled by someone selected by a handful of people. I don't know that that's really what the process calls for unless there's a very good reason to do that. This would weaken confidence in our city by local residents, by businesses, by people considering coming to, to live here. It would destabilize our local system. It would set a precedent that we could overthrow the decision of the voters by having a recall whenever we don't like the decision that they came up with. So I really think that we should come together in our city and think twice. Do we really want to promote recall and have all of that bad news go all the way across the country that the city of Troy, supposedly a great city, would choose to do something so stupid? Now, in closing, I'm going to encourage everybody to vote no against the recall. I hadn't planned on talking about the, the issue of homophobia or homosexuality or whatnot, but being a physician, I do have some inside information, so I think I want to address that issue. We, we look at lifestyle issues, like what kind of food people choose to eat, whether there's trans fats in their diet or not, too much fat, too many french fries, whether it's alcohol or drugs or whatever. These things all have consequences. Smoking cigarettes, we don't want that done in public.
I'm sorry, your time is up. I apologize.
So homosexuality has a short lifestyle.
Brenda Shotal, a resident, I apologize. Good evening.
My name's Brenda Shaludal. I am a resident of Troy. I don't normally speak at things like this, but I thought that this was important enough that I say my piece. In 2011, Mayor Janice Daniels was found have written on her Facebook page an insulting slur directed at homosexuals. I am here tonight to express my desire to have it known for the record that I do not wish to have Janice Daniels represent me as a Troy resident. During campaign years, I choose not to become involved in campaigns or the political process other than to privately educate myself on the issues and utilize my right to vote. However, when I read those printed words deliberately written by Janice Daniels, I was deeply offended and disturbed by her obvious intolerance for the people that are different or have a different lifestyle than her. She certainly has the right to her opinion on sensitive issues such as this. However, I had an expectation of her, as our elected official, to not express hurtful insults towards those that may otherwise have supported her. Her Facebook slur was inexcusable and shows her true character. For the record, she does not represent me, and I support her recall.
Thank you. Fred Echot, resident of Troy. Good evening again.
Yes, good evening again. These remarks are for items that are not on the agenda, because I've previously spoken about items that were on the agenda. The recall itself was not on the agenda, so I know some people spoke about it during the previous public comment, despite the fact that the rule is dictated otherwise. But in any case, I have an ad here, taken from a recent Troy Times. This ad was paid for by Recall Janice Daniels, and here are the four reasons the mayor is up for recall according to this ad. First, she called the city charter whimsical. Number two, she has created a quote "hostile work environment" unquote. Number three, she has harmed Troy's reputation. And number four, she has quote "ignored the business community" unquote. I submit to you that these accusations don't justify a recall. First of all, they're just accusations. Nothing has really been proved. Unfortunately, in this state, the recall bar is set pretty low. Just drum up a few things that people signed a petition for, make sure the language is clear, get the required amount of signatures, and bingo, the recall is on the ballot. So the mayor could be recalled for supposedly committing unpopular acts and making statements that rub people the wrong way. Not really doing anything wrong, not doing anything fraudulent, not doing anything dishonest, not doing anything discriminatory, and certainly not doing anything criminal. I say supposedly she did these things because I certainly don't believe the mayor has created a hostile work environment by challenging the city manager, the prior city manager, who eventually left for a job in Florida where he could play more golf and be closer to his grandson. I certainly don't believe she has harmed Troy's reputation by pointing out the health facts about homosexual lifestyles, and I certainly don't believe she has ignored the business community by refusing to support the Transit Center, a campaign platform she ran on and won during the last election. And that's what this recall is really all about. It's about the last election. Recall supporters view the recall as a second opportunity to win the last, to win the last As I mentioned earlier, if recall supporters are concerned about being whimsical, they should think about the whimsical nature of this recall and its implication on future mayoral candidates. If recall supporters are concerned about Troy's reputation, they should think about the surrounding communities and their reaction to a mayoral recall.
I'm sorry, Mr. Echot, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the list is Jeff Williams. He's also a resident. Good evening, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Williams. I've been a Troy resident for 27 years. I support the recall of Mayor Janice Daniels. Now, each of the four items listed in the recall documents are true, but one stands significantly alone. Why? Because it involves our children. On January 9, you, Mayor Daniels, attended a meeting with some of our Troy High School children. Their intent was to develop an anti-bullying campaign for their school, but you seized the opportunity to inflict your own extreme ideology when you made the statement, and I quote, "The homosexual lifestyle is dangerous" unquote. No, you, Madam Mayor, are dangerous. Why? Because you put our children in harm's way. When you made those bigoted and hurtful comments about that group of our citizens, you, Mayor, crossed the line. Where did you ever get the idea you could march into the mayor's office, approach our children, and attempt to manipulate them? That, Madam Mayor, is not your role. That's not the role of any mayor in any city. When I was transferred back to Michigan, my wife and I decided to move to Troy for two reasons. One, for the quality of education, and two, for the diversity the city had to offer. Our two sons grew up in Troy, and I'm proud to say they have a very diverse collection of friends, yes, even gay friends. You, Mayor Daniels, are mayor and represent by virtue of your title one of the most diverse cities in this country, and yet, in less than one year, you have divided it. You continue to preach about First Amendment rights, the right of freedom of speech, but you have never quite grasped the concept of being responsible for your words. You continue to say you stand for diversity. In fact, you tell everyone publicly, "I love everyone, I love all people." Yet, Mayor, your actions and statements, again and again, tell quite a different story. Your disparaging remarks on Facebook and your continued statements attacking the gay lifestyles, as you put it, sadly are more of a true indicator of what's in your heart. Nothing in this world is more important to us than the safety and security of our children. In short, when you, Mayor Daniels, mess with our kids, you mess with our quality of life. Finally, I address the council and also the parents of Troy. Can we really afford the risk of having this mayor attempting to manipulate the minds of our children for the next three years? She's done it before. Will she do it again? No. Not if we vote yes to recall Mayor Janice Daniels. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Marlene Yapspin, a resident of Troy. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marlene Yapspin. I have lived in Troy since 1994. I am an educator, and I have taught in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Michigan. I currently work with the College of Education at Wayne State University and have spent some time in many of the Troy schools. One of the things that strongly concerns me about the recall is something that nobody has brought up. During the weekends that I spent at the library on Saturday and Sunday, often cold and wet, collecting signatures, I was shocked and stunned to find out how many people, who, how many Troy residents came back from spring break hearing about Troy in Arizona, hearing about Troy in Florida, hearing about Troy in Arizona and the southwest area. These people came back hearing negative comments and embarrassing statements about their city that they loved. They were shocked. I was shocked, and I think that there is something that the council needs to be aware of. We have been talking tonight only about local issues. Troy is in a national spotlight because of what has happened. So I am joining with all of those people who came back after break in Easter and who felt so strongly about changing the political discord and making an effort to change the political spectrum in Troy, and I am supporting them for the recall of the current mayor, Janice Daniels.
Thank you. Next on the list is Diane Elf. She's also a resident of Troy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I would like to ask the city council to join me, no matter what side of the fence you are on, in thanking the leadership of the recall team for running a clean-cut campaign. They have been and are a great example to the children of Troy, as the children got to experience firsthand the functional dynamics of our state constitution and democracy in action. My husband and I are voting for the recall of Mayor Janice Daniels for the future of Troy and its children. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonya Frye, she's also a resident of Troy. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. City council, city management, fellow guests. Sonya Frye, Troy resident. Let me ask you a question. Is a knife a good thing or a bad thing? In the hands of a surgeon, it's a life-saving tool, but in the hands of a murderer, it's an instrument of killing. It all depends how we use it. Let me ask you a question. Is a recall a good thing or a bad thing? Again, it all depends how we use it. If we use it to remove corruption and abuse of power, it's a great tool for our democracy. If we use, but if we use it to intimidate a newly-elected officials and defame an innocent person and transform the voter's decision, then it's becoming a tool for anti-democracy. And believe me, guys, I've seen what a not democratic society looks like. I used to live in a country where elections are not fair, where the political opposition is not tolerated, and when sometimes even end up in jail, even disappear. Or you might say, "Oh, we don't have it in our country," and that's true, and thank God for that. But everything has its beginning, and when I see elements of that nature appearing here in this country, it alerts me probably more than most of the people in this room, because I've seen it before. We can't let this happen here in Troy. We can't let this happen in the country. I strongly urge you, vote no Troy recall. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. James Savage, he's a resident. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. Sitting here, this seems almost like deja vu. We have heard words tonight like bigot, bully, and all these kind of words. And these were not from the mayor, these were from people right in this, in this room. I have a DVD here that's from the library, December the 5th, 2011. And this is available at the library, and I would urge everyone residing in the city of Troy to view it, because history will show it as a dark day in the history of Troy. At that meeting, I think it went on for about five hours or six hours, something like that, hour after hour of people from all over the planet verbally attacking our mayor. These attacks and abuse and slander continued for over 10 months, finger-pointing and being called slanderous names to her face. My comments have been distorted by people right here. Mr. Shepke has been slandered by a whole group of people right here at this podium. Frank Irwin, representative of Magna International, bad-mouthed our city and...